Hi, everybody. Thank you for coming. This is the Middle School Jazz Band and right before us was the Middle School Chamber Orchestra and the Middle School Advanced Choir. Alright guys, ready?
Ms. Malar, are you staying to play? They were playing the National Anthem, no? Oh lovely. Okay, so we'll pull into order and do that now. Thanks, Ms. Malar. Oh, yeah, so we'll get it going, so. All good, all good, yeah. Oh, you checked the mic there again, why is that? Oh, I'm sorry. Check, check, okay. Alright, so we'll go ahead and pull into regular session. We've got a little bit more music, a little more entertainment, so appreciate the flexibility, so.
Alright, and we're all gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store.
We're gonna just stay standing, our advanced choir's coming.
Everyone remain stand at for the National Anthem. Ray has lost his voice, so you might not hear him.
They coming up here?
Yeah, they're gonna go on the risers there.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose bright stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight For the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, It proved through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Thank you very, thank you very much to the band and the choir for that.
Yeah, so just before we do the student council, if that's alright, I just wanted to say thank you. We had three different groups perform, we weren't able to listen to everybody, but last group with Ms. Williams and our advanced choir, so thank you. Mr. Gilbert was here, I believe, with our chamber orchestra, and then Ms. Malar was here with our jazz band. So just a round of applause for all of our kids, please. Thank you, sir.
Alright, we'll start off with the student council report. We have Sebastian Wiesa from the high school student council president.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sebastian Wiesa. I'm the student body president at the high school. I'm here to give a report on events going on at the high school, and we have it split up to showcase the goals that the high school's hitting based on the Somer Central School District, so we'll start off with 21st century knowledge and skills. For student life, AP and IB exams are officially completed. Congrats to our AP and IB students for their hard work. The student recognition award ceremony for freshmen, sophomores, and juniors was held last week on the 23rd. Congrats to all students who won awards. The science research symposium was held on May 9th, so it was awesome to see the showcase of the amazing projects by our science research students. And also celebratory senior events are beginning. As the school year winds down, we're starting this Thursday with our senior convocation, which is an award ceremony for the seniors. The academic challenge Quiz Bowl, varsity, and JV teams competed in the national championships in New Orleans. They are on their first flight home right now. Our varsity team was five and one and has moved on to the next round, which will be held virtually in mid-June, so congrats to them. For the arts, the SHS Spring Orchestra and Choir Concert was held last week, so that was great. And tomorrow, the SHS Musical Company is hosting our annual Broadway and Concert Performance, where students sing their favorite Broadway songs, and also me and my co-president are hosting the event, so that's gonna be fun. And tomorrow, the SHS Musical Company is hosting our annual Broadway and Concert performance, where students sing their favorite Broadway songs, and also me and my co-president are hosting the event, so that's gonna be fun. For athletics, congrats to all of our spring teams on an amazing spring season. A few standouts are the varsity girls softball for making the section finals for the first time in Somers history. Haley Donovan qualified for three events, and Andrew Faison qualified for two events at the New York State Championships in Syracuse on June 8th. And Lindon Pepe was selected for Con Ed Athlete of the Week. For student councils, student council organized our annual Field Day last Friday, which was a lot of fun for our students and teachers. On the social, emotional, and physical wellness objective for counseling, counselors recently finished up this annual senior surveys. The surveys are not only important to gather student feedback on the college process, but it is a formal way for students to request the college to which they want their final transcript sent to. The counseling office also sent out its annual senior parent survey. The parent feedback on what worked and what was most challenging in the college process to offer opportunities for improvement is appreciated. Lastly, both elementary and secondary counseling teams held their annual school counseling advisory last week. Parents who volunteered and participated in offering insights and feedback into our programs and services are enormously appreciated. For our global citizen objective in student life, this Friday, the Somers High School will be hosting the annual Somers Science Fair with hundreds of science research students from around Westchester County. For the arts, our fashion club will be hosting a fashion show June 3rd to showcase students' fashions, designs. And in athletics, huge thank you to senior Noah Volkman for organizing our student faculty basketball game on May 10th. We had 16 faculty members compete, and the students did up taking the win 46 to 39. Lastly, elections in student council are coming up, and so we'll be introducing a new president for you guys at the next meeting, so we're excited for that. That's all, and thank you for having me.
Thanks, Sebastian, if it's all right, before we call up the high school, we're gonna go ahead and have our students from the middle school, this is a good time, if you wanna hit on out, thanks again for performing tonight, thanks, Sebastian. And so in just a moment, let those kiddos head on the way out, and we'll get the next piece started, so. All right, Mr. Bear, I think you're up next with our Val and Sal for the high school, or is that one of your teammates? That's you, all right.
I was just looking to see if they were here, they are here, so we publicly announced back in the fall our Val and Sal, valedictorian and salutatorian for the class of 24, and so we're honored to have them here tonight to celebrate and look forward to hearing from them at graduation when they give their speeches. So our salutatorian, who's attending Brown next year, is Anthony Fusco. And our valedictorian, who will be attending MIT in the fall, Angelina, Angie Ayubi, sorry.
We'll start with the high school this year, Mr. Bear, so go ahead if you like on our tenure recognition, so, thank you, sir.
All right, so I'm gonna now invite my team up, so if Mr. Rodriguez and Ms. Kearns can join me. Do we have certificates for Val, Angie, and? All right, so, we'll do that, Angie and Anthony, come on up.
And Mr.? Yeah, and then actually, we're gonna have Mr. Riola come on down, because we're gonna go ahead and do the high school salut, Lou, if you're okay, you can come on down next. We'll do our student of distinction from Bosse's, that'd be great. Nancy, if you could have a circle behind us, because we'll have enough room in front, the kids, when they come up.
You want them behind us?
Just right behind us, yeah, we'll shake hands that way. Yeah, 'cause I don't wanna, in the front, yeah. No. Or not. All right. So Lou, we'll have you go ahead next from Bosse's for our student of distinction from our Northern Westchester Bosse's partnership.
Okay, Dr. Blanch, thank you so much, we're here to recognize Liam Ferretti, one of your students and our fine students. For the student of distinction award, I'm gonna invite Mr. Sol to come up, our principal from CTE, to do the introductions and the celebration. On behalf of Neil Boyle, our district superintendent, our Board of Education, I would like to extend a thank you to the Somers Board of Education, the greater Somers community, the Somers administration, and especially to you, Dr. Blanch, for all your support, not only in Somers, but across the region. Your impact is definitely valued, and as a 36-year educator, it has been my pleasure working with you all these years, so thank you. So at this time, I'm gonna introduce Mr. Sol to come up and give Liam his award, but once again, thank you to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Riola, again, I'm Mr. Sol, I'm one of the two principals at our Career and Tech Center. We, in case people don't know, we not only provide students with technical education, but we also provide them opportunities to earn English credits and math credits, so I'm honored to have Ms. Mark Alovic to kind of speak about Liam, because she's the English teacher on our team.
Thank you. I've had the honor of teaching Liam for two years. He's hardworking, polite, and friendly, and is well-deserving of this award. He never gives up on his work, and he excels in the construction electricity program. His perseverance and his drive is a tremendous amount in the classroom, and in addition to being talented and hardworking, he has an excellent rapport with his peers and his teachers, he's always willing to help out. And he is a humble man who handles himself with a tremendous amount of dignity and respect. And as his construction electricity teacher states, and in conclusion, he is confident that Liam will have a bright future ahead of him because of his strong work ethic, dedication, and incredible positive attitude. He will succeed in all his future endeavors and is an ideal student to be chosen as student of distinction.
So this is a student of distinction from May 2024, the certificate is awarded to Liam Ferretti in recognition for your outstanding leadership skills, academic progress, and community spirit. Congratulations.
All right, so we're gonna throw it up a little bit, Mr. Bear, we're gonna start with the high school, working on down, here we go.
All right, so tonight, we are pleased to be recommending six individuals, well, five individuals for tenure and recognizing one who was granted tenure earlier in the fall due to an earlier hiring season. So the first person I'm going to, I was gonna say student, which is apt because he's a former student, but he's no longer a student, he is one of our teachers, so I'm gonna invite Mike Cleary to please come up. You get to stand right here. So it's with great pleasure that I recommend Michael Cleary for tenure as a health teacher at Somers High School. One of Michael's greatest strengths is undoubtedly his ability to connect with his students. This is clearly evident as soon as you walk into Mike's classroom and see him interacting with them. He greets each student enthusiastically as they walk into the room, takes the time to get to know his students on a personal level, and encourages all his students to take risks, knowing that they do so in an environment that is supportive and affirming. Michael's knowledge of and passion for his subject are also equally apparent upon visiting his classroom. He makes the study of wellness interesting and relevant for our students, always asking his students to apply what they are learning in the classroom to their own lives. He challenges our students to make good, healthy decisions so that they can grow to become healthy, thriving adults. A highly effective teacher and a trusted and inspiring coach, Mike has definitely made his mark on our school, and I'm pleased to be recommending him for tenure tonight, congratulations, Mike. And while Max is making his way across, I'm gonna invite our next candidate up, Lauren DiFrancesco. So Lauren has been with us for the last four years after graduating from graduate school, where she spent a short time doing a leave replacement in a middle school. Though new to the profession, Lauren immediately proved herself to be a solid teacher with an incredibly strong knowledge of the content and a firm grasp of instructional strategies. Working over the years in both regular and co-taught classrooms, Lauren has a deep understanding of how to make the learning of mathematics accessible for all learners. Breaking down complex concepts into more manageable steps that all students can find success. As an ICT teacher in a co-taught classroom, Lauren has worked collaboratively with her co-teaching partners to help deliver differentiated instruction in ways that support all learners. She is passionate about the teaching of mathematics and fosters great relationships with her students. Outside the classroom, Lauren has served as a class advisor as well as an assistant girls soccer coach. Overall, in her four years here, Lauren has immersed herself in our school community and has become a contributing and valued member of our faculty. It is with pleasure that I recommend Lauren for tenure, congratulations, Lauren.
Good evening, everyone, and up next, we'd like to invite Amantina Reyes. It is with great pleasure that I recommend Amantina for tenure as a Spanish teacher at Somers High School. Amantina is passionate about her subject matter, and her students benefit and feed off of her enthusiasm. She makes learning fun, incorporating students' interests into her lessons and making the learning relevant for them. Her classroom is warm and friendly, and students are eager to participate. As a valued member of her department, Amantina has helped to spearhead much of the work around proficiency-based instruction and has helped lead the work that her department has been doing in developing units for the middle years program authorization. She is a member of the NYPD Leadership and Learning Team and has been instrumental in helping to move that work forward, both at the departmental and building levels. Students love Señorita Reyes and know that she cares deeply about them and is invested in their success. They enjoy being in her class and benefit from her instructional strategies. Congratulations, Amantina, we are very lucky to have you at Somers. Okay, up next, we are going to invite down Sharon Murdock. As a teaching assistant at Somers High School, Sharon runs our testing center, a vital service to students with various learning needs and disabilities, where they can take their classroom assessments in a setting in which their testing accommodations can be met. Managing the myriad complex tasks that go along with running the testing center, further complicated by the sheer volume of students coming in and out of the center during any given period, Sharon has expertly enacted protocols and expectations to help it run smoothly. She has taken her job seriously and has executed all of her responsibilities effectively. When she has seen a need for tweaking established procedures, she's communicated that need to us and has worked carefully to make sure that both students and teachers are aware of the changes being implemented. Testing at the high school level can be anxiety-producing for many students, let alone students who have learning and testing challenges. Sharon has created an atmosphere in our testing center where students feel comfortable, know that they are cared for, and can take their tests knowing full well that they will be supported along the way. When issues arise with a particular student, she settles the student and reassures them so they can continue with their test and finish it successfully. In this way, her calm and relaxed demeanor assists her greatly in her work with students. Sharon has done a great job in her time at SHS, and it gives me pleasure to be recommending her for tenure.
I'd like to invite Eileen Nolan up to the podium. As a vital part of our self-contained instructional program, Eileen has been instrumental in supporting our most unique learners over the past two years, helping them navigate the complexities of high school while finding success both academically and socially. The students with whom Eileen works with require the most support for their learning as well as their verbal and auditory processing. Eileen works incredibly well with the entire population in our skip program, ensuring that their needs are being met. In skip, she is incredibly attuned to the students' emotions and is there to calm them down, provide comfort, or de-escalate their behaviors when they are particularly dysregulated or having a tough day. As a one-on-one assistant to a student, Eileen has helped him navigate the world and to communicate effectively. She is there to support him in every move, helping him find success despite the challenges he may face. She helps the student face any obstacle that gets in his way, not by removing the impediment, but rather by providing the support that empowers him to develop greater independence and emotional regulation. Eileen is firm yet tender, always demonstrating care and concern for her students, and they in turn come to trust her immensely. She is their advocate, and they know it, even if they can't always express it. Eileen, thank you for all that you do for our students, and congratulations on being recommended for tenure. Next up is Rini Bacas.
Rini actually received tenure earlier this fall, we are celebrating her tonight along with all of our other tenure recipients. As part of our amazing team in our skip program, Rini's passion for working with this population of students, along with the
along with the incredible compassion she shows for them, makes her a valuable member of our team. She cares deeply about her students, is invested in their well-being, and does all she can to ensure they are fully supported academically, socially, physically, and emotionally. Since she works with a largely non-verbal group of students, Rini has an innate sense of her students' vulnerabilities and is quick to jump into action to help support them when the need arises. She is incredibly flexible, which is vital in a program in which the needs of the students and the program can shift at any moment. Rini cares deeply about her students, gets to know them on a personal level, and works tirelessly to help them have a positive experience academically and socially. Rini, we are lucky to have you as part of our team, and we are thrilled that you have received tenure as recognition of your work. Middle school next? Yep, they're coming up. And I believe the middle school is next.
I'm going to welcome down Jen Schneider to join me. It's a great honor to stand before you to speak to you about my colleague Jen Schneider. Jen and I both made the decision to join the SMS faculty in 2020, leaving tenured positions at high schools in the middle of a pandemic. So obviously, our risk paid off because she's here getting tenure, and I'm principal. So, very smart ladies, side by side. Jen's commitment to continuous improvement is remarkable. In her role as a math teacher, she regularly revisits her plans, meticulously refines and enhances them, even if it means putting in many extra hours of work and thought. Her drive for excellence ensures that her students receive the best possible education tailored to meet their ever-evolving needs. Beyond her dedication to her lesson planning, Jen is known for her unwavering support of her students. She seeks out every available moment in her schedule to provide them with extra help and support, including during their team times, which often coincides with her own free period. This selfless approach highlights her genuine concern for her students' success and well-being. Jen's willingness to assist her fellow teachers is another testament to her generous spirit. She is always ready to lend a hand, sharing her insights and collaborating to enhance the educational experience for all. Understanding that each student is unique, Jen goes above and beyond to accommodate the diverse learning styles and abilities of the learners in her room. Her classroom is a model of inclusivity with multiple access points designed to ensure that every student can thrive in a math classroom. I am not a math learner, and I love being in Jen's math room. She is deeply attuned to the varying needs of her students and adept at creating environment where everyone can succeed at math and feel comfortable and confident. Safety is another area of Jen's influence. Her students wanted me to make sure that I included her famous quote of "safety first." Jen wants to make sure that her environment is safe for both emotional and physical risk-taking. Lastly, but certainly not least, Jen has a delightful way of incorporating food into her practice, which is very engaging to middle school learners. They said, "Whenever it can be a dessert, Mrs. Schneider makes sure it's part of the learning." Her innovative approach often brings smiles to her students' faces and makes learning an enjoyable experience. Jen, it's a great honor to recommend you for tenure tonight. That's my first tenure recommendation as principal, so I'll never forget it.
And good evening. At SIS, we have five wonderful educators we'd like to recognize for tenure, and we're going to ask you to come up and all wait the whole time. So can we have Melissa Mamorilla, Melissa Riley, Kelly Mancini, Denise Tiso, and Amanda DiMarco-Belly? Please come down and join us. So we're going to start with Melissa Mamorilla. We are proud to recommend Melissa Mamorilla for tenure as an elementary school special education teacher. Over the many years that Melissa has been with us, she has worn many hats. She has served as a permanent substitute, a leave replacement for both special education and general education, and most recently is one of our dedicated fourth-grade ICT teachers. Melissa's journey has been marked by her commitment to our students and her remarkable flexibility. During the challenging times of the pandemic, she taught in a co-taught classroom in the SIS gym. It was certainly a challenging time, and Melissa truly demonstrated resilience and dedication to providing the best educational experience possible under those extraordinary circumstances. Melissa has a unique ability to form lasting relationships with her students, leaving a positive impact that extends far beyond the classroom. Her kindness, patience, and genuine care create an environment where students feel valued and inspired to achieve their best. We are incredibly fortunate to have Melissa as part of our educational team. Her positivity and her ability to make learning fun have made a difference in the lives of many Somers students. Please join me in congratulating Melissa Mamorilla on her well-deserved tenure. Here's many more years of meaningful difference. And next, we have Kelly Mancini. Come on up. Your turn to the spotlight. SIS would also like to congratulate Kelly Mancini on her tenure as a teaching assistant at SIS. Kelly is an invaluable member of our SIS family as she brings positivity, kindness, and a sense of humor to both the students and the staff. Kelly began at SIS as a well-loved monitor, and we quickly realized her ability to support students. Students gravitated towards her during lunch and recess just to talk to her, tell her stories, or to solve their problems. Once we convinced Kelly to join our team full-time, she supported some of our neediest children. During COVID, she teamed with Megan St. Germain in fourth grade, where they formed an amazing team, even though they were in two classrooms, for their students, where they felt loved, respected, and safe. We often refer to Kelly as the child whisperer. We don't know what magic it is that she has for some of our students as she can encourage some of our most reluctant students to succeed, face their academic challenges, and their social and emotional challenges as well, always with a positive attitude. And her smile and sense of humor are contagious. Kelly, we thank you for all you do at SIS and our students, and congratulate you on your well-deserved tenure. Seems we hired a lot of people during the pandemic and kept them. Melissa, come on up. Melissa Riley. We would like to recognize the dedication and outstanding contributions of Melissa Riley, a teaching assistant at Somers Intermediate School. Melissa joined our team again during one of our most challenging periods, right in the midst of the pandemic. Melissa was one of the first people we interviewed virtually and didn't meet in person until the first day of school. Despite many challenges, Melissa's commitment never wavered. Every day, while her students attended class virtually, Melissa was physically present at SIS. She supported her third graders in fostering connections even though her students were faces on a screen. Her efforts went a long way in maintaining a sense of normalcy and continuity for those students. Currently, Melissa supports students in our skip classroom, where she works with the team as a one-to-one teaching assistant. Her student is always smiling, ready to try new things, and that's all due to her ability to make him feel safe and make everything he does fun. All the students in the class benefit from her positivity and kindness. Beyond her role in the classroom, Melissa's contributions extend to the wider school community. Every day, regardless of the weather, she is a familiar and friendly face of parent pickup. Her knowledge of all the families and their cars helps expedite our car line. Melissa knows every car and every family, even when they have a different car and try and trick us. Melissa, your hard work, adaptability, and heartfelt dedication have made such an impact on SIS. We are grateful for all that you do and proud to have you as part of our team. Congratulations on your well-deserved tenure.
Okay, Amanda, you're next.
We are proud to recommend Mrs. Amanda DiMarco-Belly for tenure as a teaching assistant for Somers Central School District. Mrs. DiMarco-Belly has been a valuable member of our school community, particularly in the special education classroom, where her dedication and skills have significantly impacted our students' learning and development. Amanda joined our team during COVID, where she worked tirelessly navigating the challenges of two classrooms and virtual instruction. Amanda brought her background and expertise in technology to SIS and was a great resource for the fourth-grade teachers and grade-level colleagues that she worked with. For the past few years, Amanda has supported students in our skip classroom. She collaborates with many support providers and teachers to ensure that the students she works with feel welcomed and engaged in their learning. Amanda demonstrates genuine care and empathy and establishes strong relationships. Amanda focuses on the whole child and supports students not only academically, but socially and emotionally. Amanda can implement instructional strategies and accommodations to meet the diverse needs of students so that they can grow. She also assists in creating a positive classroom environment conducive to learning for all students. Amanda consistently demonstrates patience, empathy, and a positive attitude in challenging situations. Amanda is an asset to Somers Intermediate School and will continue to make a positive impact on the lives of students for years to come. Congratulations, Amanda, on your tenure. Our next one is for Denise Tiso, who couldn't make it tonight, but hopefully she's watching at home. It's our pleasure to recognize the tenure of an outstanding educator and a valuable member of our community, Ms. Denise Tiso. Denise, a teaching assistant, has worn many hats at Somers Intermediate School, consistently demonstrating her versatility and dedication to our students. Denise began her journey with us as a permanent substitute and quickly proved herself through various leave replacement positions. Her flexibility became particularly evident during the challenging times of the COVID-19 pandemic, when we faced a critical need for teaching assistants to team with teachers in two separate classrooms, each room with about 12 students. Denise eagerly stepped up to the challenge. Partnering with Deb Carvo, she managed a fifth-grade class set up in a music room and provided a safe environment, support, and guidance to those 12 students. Currently, Denise is making students smile in a third-grade co-teach classroom. Here, her collaboration with teachers and support for students extends way beyond academics. She plays an important role in nurturing students' social and emotional well-being by creating a positive and inclusive learning environment. Denise's dedication and warmth have not gone unnoticed. Recently, a student described her as "a ray of sunshine," a testament to the bright and positive impact she has on everyone around her. We are incredibly fortunate to have Denise as part of our team. Her commitment, adaptability, and care for our students make her an asset to the community. Please join me in congratulating Denise Tiso on her well-deserved tenure with the Somers Central School District.
Okay, we'll get Primrose ready if we can invite our Primrose team members down to join us.
While this group can entertain a group of students all by themselves, we promised them tonight they wouldn't have to stand alone. So to echo some of the sentiments we heard tonight, tonight, the tenure appointments are particularly special to us because these staff members took their positions in the uncertain days of 2020. In education, like many professions, staff members reimagined what learning would look like. And true to the Somers Central School District mission, these educators looked after the whole child every single day. The teachers being honored tonight made what we thought might be impossible possible and deserve our sincere appreciation. And we are going to start with Ashley Eichel. Okay, we need a little... In order to start with Ashley, we need a little shine, and it looks like this. As an educator, Ashley Eichel is truly a force to reckon with and brings her trademark shine to her students every day. She came on the scene in the winter of 2020, found her stride, and then zoomed into the lives of her students as we shut down in March. In the fall of 2020, she brought her shine and explicit instruction to kindergarten. Looping with her class, she dazzled her colleagues, families, and her students on first grade. Taking over as our first-grade team leader, her organization and collaborative approach brought joy to team meetings. Whether assisting students or colleagues, Ashley always steps up to the plate with kindness, reassurance, and skill. When the final bell rings for the day, the students head out, but not Ashley. It's time for Reading Lab. And Ashley dedicates her time to Reading Lab, where she helps our struggling readers grow in their stamina and love for reading. We are thrilled to recommend Ashley Eichel for tenure.
Next up, we'd like to honor Therese Marshall. When Therese Marshall is in the teaching zone, there is simply no stopping her. And there's no telling what her students will learn. She may pull vowel teams, a new vocabulary word, or a reinforcing pom-pom out of her apron pocket. The magic also continues after-school hours at our reading lab. She has worked well with our teacher librarian to ensure inclusive titles make their hands into all of the students' hands and book baggies. She, as our technology leader, can bridge the perceived gap between technology and curriculum to find the value added for all students. More than anything, Therese Marshall brings life and enthusiasm to learning every single day. She is a cheerleader for every student. We are happy to be in the administrator's zone and recommend Therese Marshall for tenure. Congratulations.
Alana Webster, it's your turn. Come on up.
Alana is the person we call when the unexpected happens. She's always there to support us. Alana joined the Somers Central School District as a shared psychologist between Primrose and SIS. But finally, this year, she's all ours. She has served our kindergarten, first, second grade, and third grade teams. Her ability to assess and interpret testing data has been invaluable to the Committee on Special Education and to our building-based data teams. When we need a problem solved, Alana is the one to go to. Additionally, Alana has been instrumental in applying for SEPTO grants that enhance student life. One such SEPTO grant expanded the assessment portfolio of the Somers Central School District, empowering the district to identify areas in which students can benefit from additional support. Alana has been a sounding board for teachers who are looking for additional supports and interventions. As a trusted adult, she is the person for students to go to when they are having a hard day. We thank you for your dedication, Alana, and are pleased to recommend you for tenure.
Next up, we'd like to have Maria DeLeo come down. From the beginning, Maria joined the kindergarten team with a warmth and child-centered focus that instantly meshed with her teammates at Primrose. Whether facilitating play, zooming with students, or reinforcing letter sounds, Maria rolled up her sleeves to ensure students were always learning, always progressing, and always enjoying school. Whether guiding students with phonemic awareness, assisting in small-group instruction, or supporting students during science experiments, Maria finds joy in the wonder of learning and in the growth of her students. We are thrilled to be recognizing her for tenure as a teaching assistant at Somers Central School District.
Danielle Cilleri, come on over.
So, one of the things we know about Danielle, as a teaching assistant, it is often impossible to find her. And not because she's goofing off, because she is everywhere. We're never sure where we sent her. If there's something that needs to be done, Danielle is there to lend a hand. During the COVID, Danielle came on board as one of our COVID TAs as well, and she was really instrumental in embracing and partnering with our English-language learners, connecting with those students personally, making them feel at ease, and making them feel heard. Her first summer, she took a position at our extended school year, caring for our most vulnerable learners and keeping learning going through the summer. Assisting students with academics, ensuring socialization, and making everyday fun, the children enjoyed her kindness and her humor. As a 1st and 2nd grade TA, Mrs. Cilleri has assisted students across curriculum areas and all settings. Her command of content and her connection to students are just two of the reasons why we are thrilled to recommend her for tenure tonight. Congratulations.
And our last member of Team Primrose tonight, but not the least, Mafalda Nevada. Mafalda has been with us a long time. She first joined us as a substitute and as an aide, and then quickly recognizing her ability to support a number of students, she came back to kindergarten as a teaching assistant during the early days of 2020. Working tirelessly to ensure normalcy, her reassuring and maternal presence put students and their families at ease. From assisting the teachers in reimagining math games, to assisting the school counselor in teaching the students to socialize and play cooperatively, Mafalda brought encouragement, laughter, and her artistic flair, as well as her beaming smile to life at Primrose. We are so proud to recommend Mafalda Nevada for tenure as a teaching assistant tonight.
Look at that. He's like a predictor of all my words I'm going to say, too. So, I have the pleasure to go ahead and, I was not watching the Rangers game, but I'm going to see if I can catch it tonight, so I'm not sure exactly what's going on. So, Mr. Platanian, I have the pleasure, we had him to recognize him for tenure this year. And so, on behalf of the entire administrative team, one of the things that we've come, if you've been to, went to the Wizards game, this year was a great game. Last year, they actually picked them up. I don't think they got picked up off the floor this, did they? Did they pick you up this year? No, the last year. So, when they came out and they do his announcement, everyone's like running around, everyone's excited, and they go, "Chris, the dream crusher, Platanian," it was, ah, it was great. People think it has to do with basketball, it's nothing to do with basketball. So, Chris oversees the business and the finance. Every time that I go or remember the team go, they're like, "Hey, I found something really good for the kids. It's a really good price." No. And so, he's like, every dream we come forward, it's like, it's a crush. It's a crush. He's protecting the budget, he's doing a great job, it has nothing to do with basketball, but it's great to do that. Honestly, Chris oversees the business, finance part of the district, as well as our maintenance team, custodial team, and as well as our nutritional services. So, operationally, works on our safety security as well. And so, any day and every given time, there's always something going on. One of the things that Chris does is amazing job, it brings great detail to his work. It helps me understand a lot more than I thought I knew, and I realize every day I talk to Chris, I don't know as much as I thought I did. And so, it doesn't matter the field or the area, but it's very helpful. The work ethic is outstanding. For him to be a partner of mine in the cabinet, as well as the administrative team, I couldn't be more proud of him. And the other piece that maybe you think wouldn't necessarily come, but that idea about caring, he cares about his teammates, he cares about our children, he cares about our teachers, and it doesn't matter what the conversation is, it's just how can we make sure that our family, Somers family is taken care of, so it's great, we appreciate it. You do make a positive difference in Somers, Chris, a positive difference in my life, and I can't thank you enough as a friend and a colleague, so thank you, sir. Congratulations. Yeah, you gotta go up and shake everybody's, you gotta shake hands, you gotta shake hands, it's gotta be the whole thing. As Chris shakes hands, we're gonna go ahead and take a small break. We got some cookies, the folks wanted us cookies, and let our staff and faculty head out, because I know they got it early morning, so we'll take a few minutes on a break.
Can you guys sit in the front row, front row? Nancy, you can stand up there. Check, 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 one, two. A little bit more. Ms. Comerfer, can you load a screen, please? All right, we're gonna get this ready and I'll let Nick go ahead and see if he got these public stuff.
Are we live? Yeah, yeah, all right. All right, we'll get back while we're setting this up. Next area right now, PTA Sept, I don't think is here, right? No. Uh, next one we have, open up for public comment for agenda items. Can someone shut that door up there, please? Going once, twice. Nope. All right.
Thank you, Nick. We're gonna go ahead and just, in a second, get our computer hooked up here, so just give us one moment. Thanks again for the flexibility, everybody, tonight. It's a very festive evening, and again, next time we meet, we also have our folks who are retiring at that point in time, so it's good celebration of that piece, so, so again, thanks for everybody with the flexibility to change things around. I'd mentioned before that Chris is not the best with timing, so I'm trying to stall for him over there, so here goes Chris, so, he tested it out seventeen times today, just, well, you know, it does work. So as this comes up, what we are looking at is our element of excellence on community engagement. And so in the area of community engagement, we're gonna go ahead and really actually, especially with where we're at, letting some of our community members do the speaking, so the first clip you will hear is from our children and their community engagement. You'll hear on the next piece, you'll hear a faculty member there on some of the work that they're doing with community engagement and our Social Emotional Wellness Advisory Committee. And then the last one is going to be related to our student, our Citizens Finance Committee. So Chris, if you hit that lower right, thank you, sir. Blow it up a little bit, there we go. Not so bad. That's new. I haven't heard that sound before, okay. I don't know. Oh, is that Gary? Gary, is that you, Gary? No, where is Gary? We're all good, good to see you, sir. I recognize the hat. It did get a little cold, we're good. Thanks, Gary. You too, sir. So here you, again, you will see our last family and community engagement, our last of our six elements. Strengthen nurture connections across the Somers community through engagement, constructive partnerships, and the inclusion of voices. So you will see on that first community involvement, that kind of panoramic shot there, that is from our first Somers Source, Where Everyone Belongs, Community Conversation, that actually we hosted at the middle school about a month or so ago. So out of that, we had a good opportunity for different community members to come in and speak, how can we create a school district of belonging? And then you'll see a few different events across the bottom there, with just some of our students at the elementary school, providing blankets for children in need and such, some of our community recognition and volunteers and our senior citizens. And over to the right, a little bit of intergenerational connections, Chris is gonna play that first one here, this is part of our, Ms. Comerfer, Claire and myself work on a superintendent student advisory council. This is the focus this year for the children to talk about belongingness in the lives of kids, these are high school kids going and learning from others, so we'll go ahead and see, Chris, if we've got some volume here, so thank you, sir.
This is focusing on belonging specifically. We've all created different projects, and we've been able to either teachers or students in Primrose and teachers and students in the high school. The point of this project is to figure out why different students may not feel that they belong and how we can fix that problem.
I was working with kindergarten through second grade teachers at the Rose. We found that oftentimes things that end in belonging are things that the teachers may not necessarily have control over, so familial differences, religion differences.
With my group, we focused on students in Primrose. One thing that we did to help students start to learn how to build their teamwork skills and understand different social views was to plant different seeds of, oh, maybe try to include this person, hey, did you get to share your ideas yet, or maybe give this person a chance.
The teachers felt that they could develop a posterior belonging through kind of school-wide events or kind of extracurricular sort of activities. So they had various things, one thing that's pretty small they do every day is morning meeting, where it's kind of a controlled space where they can openly talk about differences and familiar, have the kids familiarize themselves with differences in kind of a safe environment. It also makes everyone feel like they're cared for and belonged for, because they get their own chance to speak. They want to promote that students have an open mind, give them a broader view of the world, and maybe encourage them to notice things, but not necessarily judge them.
So you get a little taste of our students at the high schools, they permeated across the schools, either talking to teachers, or those kiddos were talking to some kids directly. So again, with that idea about driving belongingness across our schools. On the next page, you'll go ahead and see, this is our framework that we use to describe our community engagement, that's our schoolhouse, and those different windows are different ways that we engage with our community. And you'll see there our seat committee and team Tuskers, and this first video Chris is gonna play is our Social Emotional Wellness Advisory Committee, and this is the voice of one of our teachers who is on that committee, so thanks, Chris.
The Social Emotional Wellness Advisory Committee is a group of teachers, parents, community members, high school students, and administrators. We need an environment, and we have a focus of supporting students' social emotional wellness. And one of my biggest beliefs as a teacher in any year is that in order for students to excel academically, they need to have strong social emotional vibration. They need to feel comfortable with themselves, in their surroundings, in their community, and I think that that needs to be established for them before you teach them anything. Something that I feel really passionate about that came out of the CWAC work was, there was a need for teachers to get support in addressing students' deficits and executive functions. So their just ability to go throughout the day, manage their assignments, manage their time. The district consulted with experts in the heels, and we were able to have several training. Parents were able to go through training, and there have been a lot of strategies that teachers have learned and brought back to the classroom. I think that we're in a time where they have a lot more going on, and there's social media, and there's just managing everything is a lot for kids, and I think that the work we're doing here is just pinpointing it at a level that is higher than, say, when I went to school. Giving teachers strategies, giving students strategies. We have intervention programs to help students who struggle in the area of social emotional wellness, and I think that's really great.
Thanks, Chris. So in that one, you can hear from Randy, the relationship with our children, with our parents, our community, and our faculty, to help us make a positive difference, realize the talents that exist within the organization and within the school districts. So the last example I have here is from our Citizens Finance Committee, this is from a community member, again, that speaks to the partnership with our community and specifically to the finances, so, thanks, Chris.
I have CPA at a top five, and having a firm partner there, I'm on a practice, and I just want to give that. So being a part of the Citizens Finance Committee allows me to be involved in a really good venture, even before I have kids in the actual industry. The purpose of the committee is really to provide feedback to Dr. Lance and to Chris about budget process, you know, the cash inflows, the cash outflows, whatever you're saying, money on, what is the perception of the community, what, what, what is the spending money on? And to kind of just provide insight as to how the community might feel about certain aspects of budget. So we will preview the budget before the community is set to go down the budget, before it is presented to the community at any point in the next, yeah, so that we can review with Dr. Lance's team, add any clarifications, any enhancements, answer any questions about how the community might feel one way or another about certain outflows or inflows from the budget, whether it relates to funding or from government, or funding for specific projects, capital projects. The value that we provide is really for me to insight some of the community. What are the benefits of community today? What are the taxpayers interested in? Obviously, they're interested in the programs that the school's running, but also how they get taxed, and annual tax bill. And so we've always keeping the, what the taxpayers are interested in in the back of our mind, as we have these discussions with the superintendent, the superintendent's business, about, you know, what types of programs will really be able to help the community.
Thanks again, Chris. So again, you can see from that perspective, we're getting our community voice in there as much as possible on our Citizens Finance Committee. And then related there, where Rachel talked about, we've been working in the last couple of years about our long-term projections as far as our capital fund projects, be them either from capital reserve accounts or from bond structures, so that's a team that we rely upon very closely. We worked on, a few extra meetings this year we had, we had bound council come in and meet with, with our team there to get an understanding richly about what's the best strategy, so we can employ our strategy of keeping our debt service flat, not up or down, because we always know we have something to take care of, so as these next bonds come off, the next ones come on, so it stays flat. So we're able to have her expertise there as well, too, so that's very helpful. So just a couple of more pieces here, and we'll kind of close out this section, so the family partnership survey every other year is given, these just are a couple of those questions. In the summertime is when we do a little bit deeper of a dive on this work, so we would be working with the district-wide administration, partnering with the Board of Education at a summer retreat, and then this information is broken out by the buildings, so the buildings can use that to help drive some of their school success plans. In particular, they'll be working on this when their faculty leadership teams come back in the fall, to kind of see where their, where their opportunities are and where their strengths exist in each school, and to have those areas move forward, so. And on the right, you, a few years ago, we started adding a little bit more information, or going to the Instagram, you can see Instagram percentages increased pretty significantly, and our Facebook continues to increase a little bit, we have page reach a little bit down, but overall, you can see a pretty significant heavy increase on the Instagram component. The content is exactly the same, it's not different, it's just what people are choosing to go ahead and use as a social media resource area. So that was kind of the last piece we had there, again, reflecting of our community engagement from the voices of our children, and then our faculty, and then finally, the last one from our community directly, so. And then what we'll do, I know we don't have mics in the board, but we'll pause audio, Paul, if it's all right, we'll have video, we'll pull the screen back up, and we're gonna go back up to the stage and get the next part going, so we'll let our boy Jordan back at the board table, and Paul, pause on the audio, please, thank you, sir. Great, thanks, Paul. All right, so I don't know if there's any questions, board, I appreciate the flexibility and how we viewed that today, so thanks.
Thank you, thank you for that. Sorry, just making sure we didn't miss anything before, there's nothing else we missed in the back with a bunch of things, right?
Yep, I think we're up to...
Sorry, so we're on Committee and Liaison Reports. Dom?
Oh, yeah.
Communication Committee?
Yeah, this is a little bit a while ago, but last month was the Belonging Event, back in April, had about twenty-five families attend. The last of the five elements of excellence will be out in the newspaper in this next month, June, next week, or end of this week. Again, website should be up and running, we saw a brief view of it last month, so it should be up over the summer, I think July was, was the plan, July or August. Family survey, we just saw a quick view of the results, and the board will be going over them this summer.
Great, and then on the website, one of the key areas, the FAQ section was coming out, can you guys talk about what the goal of that was?
I'm happy to, so basically, yeah, so, so the, the website will also have a real search function, which is really exciting. We also plan on including this question and answer section from the Board of Education specifically, so that we could kind of close a loop on, on questions that come up during public comment. Because sometimes the questions are answered after the fact, as they should be, because, you know, we don't have an engagement per se, but a lot of times, the information is relevant to many people, so we're trying to look to close that, that feedback loop to, to families, and hopefully then we could say, hey, you could go to the website and find out the answer to those questions, instead of just sending an email back to one individual who may have asked the question. So that was the goal of, of having that, and we look forward to kind of getting that going over, over the summer, and, and upkeeping it for the year. Hopefully it'll go well, and if there's issues or concerns, let us know, so that we can continue to improve upon it.
Great, looking forward to it. Any other committee updates?
No, policy, yeah, policy we have on Friday.
Okay.
And no update there, and then the West, West Putt School Board Association, I was at the Board of Directors meeting, so you have the information in here, just for their annual budget, coming up, and Board of Directors for next year. So, and think about that next year, if anybody's interested in Board of Directors, to make sure, get that, get that word out, because we won't have somebody on that next year.
All right, great.
CWAC meets on Thursday, so I'll have an update at the next meeting, if, if we ever report. And were we gonna talk about the tri-fold at all, or not, this meeting, or?
Uh, yeah, I mean, actually, the tri-fold was sent out by the Communication Committee, any feedback on what else should be in there? Can you quickly explain what the tri-fold was?
Sorry, so, so we created a, a tri-fold, it basically gives the, the role of the Board of Ed, the policies of, on public comment, how they operate, a way to get in touch with the right chain of command, to get questions answered and, and feedback. Just an easy thing to have at the door of every board meeting was the goal, so, kind of summarizes it.
Any feedback or suggestions from the board on that?
No.
I mean, my only recommend... Good.
Looks good.
Uh, my only recommendation, I think I'd suggest launching it with the new site and the FAQs, and, you know, making sure that that's a link on there. I think that was an important piece, if you come for a question, or the public, it's good to take a look at that first, see if it wasn't answered the week before or updated on there, because hopefully the goal is we cut down on some of those repeat questions, whether it's questions, curriculum, or whatever it might be. But hopefully just making that direction, or directing people to where the actual content is, should be, A, searchable first on the website, and then B, hopefully directed by some of that on the tri-fold.
Right, the goal is to get everybody to the place they need to get their questions answered in a timely manner.
All right, great. Moving on to financial reports. Give me a second. Yep. Do anything with this?
You just acknowledge receipt.
That's it, all right, acknowledged receipt of the financial reports. All right, approval of the meeting minutes, let it be resolved, the Board of Education having received copies of the minutes of the meetings, of four, sixteen, twenty-four, and five, nine, twenty-four, hereby approves the same.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, abstain? Personnel consent agenda, let it be resolved, the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, hereby approves the attached personnel agenda.
So moved.
Second.
And then just one thing, we have two of our new colleagues here from Primrose, I see that Casey is here, our kindergarten teacher, and her colleague at kindergarten, Melissa, so welcome, thank you, ladies.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stand, objections? Great. CPSC, CSC CPSE meeting recommendation, let it be resolved, the Board of Education having received copies of the recommendation of the meetings, as listed on the attached memo, hereby approves the same. The cost of these services are contained budgeted and in the 2023-24 budget.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stand, objections? Business consent agenda, let it be resolved, the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, hereby approves the attached business agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments, Chris, nothing? Nope. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Stand, objections? All right, the results, annual budget vote and trustee elections, let it be resolved, the Board of Education, the Somers Central School District, does hereby accept the results of the May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four annual budget vote and trustee elections, as per attached.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain, objections? And congratulations to the new, two new board members. Westchester Putnam School Board Association Budget for 2024. Let it be resolved, the Board of Education of the Somers Central School District hereby approves the Westchester Putnam School Board Association's proposed 2024-25 budget and executive board nomination slate, as per attached, and instructs the district clerk to complete the ballot on its behalf.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain, objections? All right, West Putt SBA Annual Meeting and Dinner. Let it be resolved, the Board of Education, Somers Central School District hereby approves the request for the Board of Education trustee Heidi Cambrary and Amanda Candell to attend the Westchester Putnam School Board Association's sixty-second annual meeting and dinner on June second, twenty-twenty-four, at a cost of eighty dollars per person.
June third.
June third.
June third, what'd I say? Second?
It's okay.
June third.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who's on first?
Reorganizational meeting date. Where, whereas in Union and Central School Districts, the reorganizational meeting must be held on the first Tuesday in July, and alternatively, a school board may, may by resolution decide to hold the annual recognition, recognition, reorganizational meeting at any time during the first fifteen days in July, as per section seventeen oh seven two. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Somers Central School District hereby sets the date of the reorganizational meeting for the 2024-25 school year as July ninth, twenty-twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Yep, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stand, objections? Okay. Agreement interim Director of Human Resources and Student Services, whereby, whereas the Board of Education of Somers Central School District seeks to appoint Mr. Harry LaFleur...
LeFever.
LeFever, sorry. As an interim director of Human Resources and Student Services for the school district, and to approve an employment agreement setting forth the terms and conditions under which Mr. LaFever, sorry, will be employed. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Somers Central School District hereby appoints Harry to the position of interim Director of Human Resources and Student Services to a term commencing on July first, twenty-twenty-four, through and including June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, and... Can I shorten this? Be resolved further that the Board of Education hereby approves the agreement with Harry dated on May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four, setting forth the terms and conditions of employment under which Harry will serve as interim Director of Human Resources and Student Services during the aforementioned term, and hereby authorizes the President of the Board, or in his or her absence, the Vice President, to execute the agreement as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain, objections? All right, now we move on to public comment. All right, no public comment. Board member comments?
All right, looks like we're losing people, so I'll be quick. Hope everybody had a good Memorial Day, congratulations to the new, two new board members. Congratulations to the new, two new board members, Dowell and Margaret. Congratulations to all the students and the staff that were recognized tonight. Thank you for your job well done. Chris, you know, special thank you for you as well up here. And, you know, hope everybody, I know the next couple of weeks are busy with activities and school events and sports and all that, so. All good.
I loved the music when we came in.
Oh, that's right.
We missed the, the Chamber Orchestra, but I will say, and I don't know him personally, but I think Mr. Osborne would have been quite proud. Thank you to, to all of our educators who we've granted tenure, put the trust of our kids in your hands, and you've proven that you, that you've earned that. And that's great for all of us. We really appreciate all of you. Thank you to everyone from the community who came out and voted. Budget and, and board election, that is just really critical to have the engagement of our community. Yeah, let's keep moving along. Thank you. Thank you, everyone who came out today, too.
Yeah, it's a great meeting. I always love, like it when we recognize our, some of our students and hear the music and recognize our tenured teachers. It's great to hear. And it's a special meeting for me because it's, this is my last big Board of Ed meeting since I'm going off the board, and I won't be able to be at the June one because of graduation. Celebrating accomplishments of a Somers grad and getting through college and good things. So, so in advance, congratulations to the retirees who we'll be recognizing next month. You know, lots of gratitude for all of them, and lots of gratitude for the teachers that have stayed with us to receive their tenure during a really tough time to have started for all of them. So that was great. Thanks to the community for coming out to support the budget and for participating in the trustee election. We had another great turnout. I think we're standout in the county for our numbers of, we always feel like it's a low number, but in comparison, we've got a good turnout for school, school board and school budget votes, and that's great to have that engagement. And I thank the community for entrusting me to be a trustee on the board for the past six years. It's been a great experience. When I ran for the school board, I didn't run with an agenda. I ran because I was a parent and I was passionate about education and looking for a way to, to be involved in a school district that I saw doing a lot of, a lot of good things. And in a time when there was a lot of advocacy needed for what public education needed and what schools needed, so I hoped that I could be involved that way. It's been rewarding. I've got to meet, gotten to meet so many great people in the schools and outside of the schools. I've learned some things about the community I wish I didn't know, but I've also learned a lot of, you know, fantastic things that I'm, I'm really proud of. So I'm glad to be a part of the school district and grateful for I've had that opportunity to serve. So thank you.
Congratulations to all the teachers and TAs tonight who received their tenure. Also, congratulations to the students who received their prestigious titles. Great job. And thank you for the orchestra tonight for coming out and playing some good music. We missed most of it, but got the tail end, so thank you. Congratulations to the two new board members. And congratulations, Chris, on the budget.
Thank you.
I guess there's something I should have asked prior to the meeting, but maybe for next meeting, we could follow up on some of those equitable grading systems that are coming about. I just don't know much about it, and see if we can get some clarification on that as to what that exactly is and what it is we're trying to do with that.
Sure, I'll work with the learning office, and I believe there's already been a little bit in the dashboard where we can go ahead and update on there, so not a problem.
Great. Thank you.
Just going to say, congratulations again to all the, the teachers and, and TAs receiving tenure tonight, and congratulations to the valedictorian, salutatorian, and the, the BOC's student of distinction. It's so great to see the kids playing music tonight, and I was able to attend some of the concerts in the last couple of weeks, and I'll be attending at least one more next week. The kids have just been doing an outstanding job. Congratulations to the underclassmen at the high school receiving recognition for their hard work this year. Last week, it was amazing to see so many different students being recognized. The auditorium was packed. Thank you to the voters for overwhelmingly supporting the budget. The budget passed with 71% support, which is amazing, and I believe it's evidence of Chris's very hard work in putting together the budget presentations this year and how clear the messaging was. With inflation and costs being where they were and, and where we can be with the tax cap formula, I think it was to make clear that what the money we're paying for, what the money is being used to pay for and why in each of our buildings and across the district, like how everything fell out, so. And congratulations to the two new board members who will be joining us in July. I look forward to working with you. And as this is Heidi's last big meeting, I just wanted to take a second and thank her for all of her mentorship and leadership these past couple of years that I've been on the board. Thank you for your service in general for the past six years. I have to say that so much work that we do as a board is really behind the scenes. It's not really, it's not really evident from sitting behind this table sometimes. You don't really get to see all the, the, the work that does get put into it, and, and I think you can carry on as your legacy, Heidi, like implementing some of this Forward and Excellence Report, the policy work that was done, and your work on data driving, data diving into the rankings and getting Westchester Magazine to change their mind a little bit, which was an amazing accomplishment.
They're going to look at it in the fall. So make sure in the fall we reach out to them.
Yes.
They're going to try to do it different.
And, but most of all, I just want to thank you for your mentorship and, and friendship, so.
Thank you.
I'm just going to jump in. I'm not, I wasn't thinking of this as our last meeting, so I'm going to hold off on my comments, thanking both of you, so.
Yes, yours is coming because you're not, you're still here next month, so.
Oh, you're not here next month, Heidi?
She's at the last meeting.
I'll be at the very last one. The short meeting at the end of June, I'll be at. So I'm not totally done yet.
Yeah.
Just won't be like in the big auditorium thing anymore. We'll make it longer. No need, no need.
So I want to echo a lot of what everybody else said, but it's always good having the kids here and seeing them, you know, both sing the National Anthem the day after Memorial Day. That was great. Having the band here and listen to the students play, recognizing the teachers that are getting tenure, hearing all the great things that the administrators and the time they put in to talk about each one of the teachers and the, you know, the detail that, and the thought and detail that went into each one of them in announcing them. So thank you very much, and, you know, thank you to all them and the hard work that they do. The, the Community Engagement Report, I thought that was excellent, right, highlighting all the different work that Ray and the administration does in, in getting out there, right? It's not just the end of day of school leaving, right? There's a lot of activity that goes on afterwards and engaging with the community, whether it be, you know, coffees or the different workshops and committees that are set up. So thank you all for all the effort that goes into that. The, the community, the coming out and supporting the budget, again, nice job, Chris, but nice job to, you know, everybody, you know, supporting you on that and putting that together. That was definitely a team effort on that, so nice job with everybody on that. That's all, yeah. Thank you very much. Great.
Yep, and then I'll just, a couple of things again for the budget vote for the entire community as well as the flexibility tonight. So thanks, board, for letting us dance back and forth. It's appreciated. The library would not be big enough for us to be in there tonight. And I think the last piece really is the idea about tenure and what that denotes and the significance of that in educators' career. It is a recognition of our teachers, our teacher assistants, and the reality of looking at an excellent educator, educational support coming into our schools to support our children. And our administrative team is the group that devotes a significant amount of time supporting our teachers. We have new teachers, as we saw this evening, coming into the organization. And for them to be here tonight to see their tenure recognition, there's a, there's a difference that I'd like to think, and, and we acknowledge our faculty here. The reality is, is it's not a gimme in getting tenure. And I do say that every year, we have sometimes faculty members that at this point in time, it's maybe not a fit for the employee or the organization. And so we, we go ahead, and that is the piece that we make sure that it is the right fit because once we get to that tenure spot, it is an opportunity for us to acknowledge it as a long-term commitment. Our, our rate of our employees leaving us after tenure is, is nominal at best, and that's usually because there's life circumstances that take place. So I commend my administrative colleagues for all the time, effort, and energy they support our faculty with. And then when they come here this evening, it is truly a shared celebration. I like the way Jen said it is her first time she gives tenure, and that was our teacher getting her tenure. So that event is really, means a great deal to educators. So thank you, board, for allowing us to take the evening to spend so much time on it tonight. So thank you.
All right, that concludes public session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we have to return?
We're going into exec. I'll call us an exec in the back room.
Okay. We need motion.
What?
Motion going to exec.
Motion to grant exec now? Okay, fine. Let it be resolved that the Board of Education goes into exec session, discuss employment history of particular persons.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.